Looks like you're ready to go.
Thank you, Olivia. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is August 26th. We are meeting for a special meeting of our committee of the whole. I want to welcome everyone. Is there any declaration of interest from anyone, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, then we'll proceed. I would ask you to make that declaration if you discover one during the course of the meeting. Number three is our land acknowledgement. Set up here. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Ania Shinabek, the six nations of the Grand River, the Haudenosaunee,
Taxation impact, I mean. Everybody in the world is moving to a campus of care because that's how you make money in long term care. It's in the seniors residence side. And you know, for us to just dismiss that, I don't think we're doing a very good job for our taxpayers.
Councilor, if I could stop you for a second.
Yes.
You did make a comment ju- just previously about um this appearing to be the most pessimistic. Um presentation or pessimistic model and perhaps designed to discourage council. From proceeding, I wonder if we could get Mr. Rodriguez to respond specifically to that. That's a pretty serious allegation.
Yeah, so I. I- i- in my opinion, it does not reflect reflect the most pessimistic model. We have seen uh projects forecasted at. Around four hundred thousand per bed that essentially have land that was donated or land at. Um at 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 a near zero dollar cost. And so um a pessimistic. Model would be could could go. Half a million or higher. Um. And so that was one of the points I was trying to make earlier that at four hundred thousand dollars per bed, there are still some. Choices that are going to have to be made about uh which areas will will Gray County be seeking to invest in in the building for to support the programs and services required? But in no means is is four hundred thousand dollars uh going to be the most pessimistic case um to afford the biggest long term care. Redevelopment project or home that's out there. And so I I um I I don't agree with it being a pessimistic uh. Benchmark, in my opinion.
And Mr. Rodriguez, could you please also address the um comment around? The presentation being designed to discourage council from proceeding with the development. Uh was that your intention here?
Uh, well, with with all due respect, the ask for me was to give a little bit more context between the four hundred thousand dollars per bed and what was included in. And why we feel that is a reasonable benchmark. So uh that that it was my goal to be able to respond to that question this morning.
Thank you, Councilor. So ever may continue.
Yes, so um I've I've been just wondering, um you mentioned that there are projects where the land was donated that are in over four hundred. Um, could we uh get information on those, please? Um, and then lastly, I have one last thing is the the RFP in the agreement. Included with Colliers was for the development of both Rockwood Terrace and Gray Gables. Um, what effect would placing Gray Gables on hold? And potentially losing those beds have on the scope of the contract? And would it have to be uh? Retendered or or amended somehow, or you know, is this a substantial change to your scope of work?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Um. The original uh procurement was set out noting that Gray Gables and Rockwood Terrace were. To proceed as two separate projects, as that is how the province treats them. And Colliers provided pricing and uh work breakdown structure. Under that, under those terms. So they are two separate projects. And I think when I uh presented last to the redevelopment committee. I showed how the in the invoicing was being broken down. And how, again, we were being invoiced for two separate projects. So um should one be delayed or um? Uh otherwise change, we have the ability within the terms of the contract to discuss that with Colliers.
Okay, so but council did prove approve it as one in the amount of um eight hundred ninety nine thousand.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the only questions I have. I've taken enough time, so I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. I'll move on to councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Next, um the first question, uh councillor server raised the the issue of the DCs. Uh that I would uh I think the word he used was it would be a wash, uh since it'd be going from one pocket to the other. Uh my question for each of staff is, um is that accurate to say? Because at the end of the day. Um. Even though it 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 is going to a county um fund, it's not a fund that we can use as a general levy. It is, it's it's there, it's it has to be dedicated to things that are under the development charges uh plan that we have. So um is that a fair question? The second question I had was with regards to the uh the last meeting where we discussed the the topic. There was some discussion at the last meeting about postponing the uh the project and seeing and reaching out to um. The province to see if the beds could be held for us. Uh my question is, has there been any progress in that? Have we heard back from the province at all? Um, thank you.
So perhaps councillor Desai and Madam um Clerk or Madam C A O um uh the D C question, who's best to answer that?
I'll let Mary Lou speak to that in a moment because unfortunately Randy Scherzer is not with us this morning. Um with regard to uh postmo- postponement um or some delay to the Gray Gables project. I did speak with our project manager at the Ministry of Long Term Care. Who did indicate while they would not support an addition to the Gray Gables facility. Um, staff uh did say that a conversation about um extending the deadline. For project completion for Gray Gables was something that um could be undertaken. And now uh at Mary Lou can speak to the development charges question. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. So there are two components. Um. The first is that we do not collect development charges from ourselves. All municipal buildings are statutorily exempt from payment of DCs. There is, however, an amount in the D C study for D C eligible costs. Um Hampson Consulting, as you're aware, is working on the study, so currently it's in draft form. And what the amount currently shows for the expansion of Gray Gables is the D C eligible costs would be um. Just about four million dollars, four point one, and that all would be um eligible within the twenty twenty two to twenty thirty one planning period.
If I can add to um Mary Lou's remarks, this is the, sorry?
Sorry, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are see, we seem to be having issues with our live stream. So I wonder if we could just pause for a moment and let Olivia um. Uh try something and then we will. Um.
Did you?
Uh continue with the meeting, yes.
Very good.
If you just bear with us for technical issues, that would be appreciated.
No worries.
Uh Heather, I did, I did get a note from the person who indicated they were having trouble that they were on. So if.
Yes, I did, and I asked Olivia to check as well. Um she indicated she was on, but I did check with a couple of others who were having some difficulty. So. Um, it's an important meeting. And uh if uh we're having technical difficulties, I think we just need to pause for a moment and make sure that those are working properly.
Of course.
It should be up and running, Heather, if you'd like to. Check in.
Okay, let me just do a double check at my end here. Yes, I do see the live stream now. Um, so I apologize for the technical difficulties and the interruption. Um, I just want to make sure that we are um have the ability for everyone to watch the meeting.
Excellent. And perhaps just for the benefit of those individuals who may have missed the last part, the questions were. Uh from councillor Desai with respect to development charges. And secondly, with respect to can the bed the beds be held? Uh so if we could just quickly repeat the answers to those uh questions, maybe that would be beneficial to those people listening.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So to recap, with regard to some postponement uh with the Gray Gables project. Our project manager at the Ministry of Long Term Care did respond that the province uh would be willing to have a discussion. About um an extension to the completion date of a Gray Gables project.
And Mary Lou?
And with regard to development charges. Um, we do not collect development charges from ourselves. All municipal buildings are statutorily exempt from payment of DCs. There is, however, an amount in the development charges study for eligible costs. Hampson Consulting is currently working on that study and it's in draft form. And it the preliminary number indicates. That there are eligible D C charges costs for Gray Gables of approximately four point one million. That could be fully funded in the twenty twenty two to twenty thirty one planning period.
Thank you. Also decide.
I know further questions at this point, Warden.
Thank you. Councillor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and uh good morning, County Council, and Andrew, nice to see you again. Uh Andrew, when you uh spoke at our last redevelopment uh uh meeting, you you talked about uh the cost savings or potential cost savings. To move the two projects along uh simultaneously. Can you just for council's benefit uh? Highlights uh where you see some of those cost savings to move the two projects along at the same time? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So the cost savings would be within the soft costs and more specifically for your prime consulting team. And so that's made up of the architect and the engineers uh recognizing that there are some. Commonality and synergies in terms of the design that would be explored um across both sites. By having a a single team that can work on the functional programming and bringing in some of those discussions um and. Decisions from one project and applying them to the other, uh there would definitely be some synergies and efficiencies that we could expect. Now, I I don't think this would translate into the construction. We're talking mostly during the design phase as part of the overall soft costs. Um, and and so I think being able to not necessarily, it don't have to happen exactly at the same time, but having. One consulting team that can. Bring the appropriate resources and share these synergies across both projects is where I where I would anticipate having some savings during the design phase.
Thank you. And so just to be clear, it if we were to uh. Uh postpone the redevelopment of Gray Gables uh a few years up the road, uh it would be more costly. Is that correct?
I I would expect that, yes.
And Mr. Warden, if I might, uh just in response to uh. Madame C E O's comment, we we have no commitment then. I mean, the the province is going to have a discussion. But there's no commitment that they're willing to uh, you know, postpone this. So there is a chance that if we don't go ahead, that we will lose these beds. Is that correct?
I I through you, Mr. Warden. Um. The project manager did. Respond to me in writing after having taken some time, I think, to consult. Um through the appropriate channel at the province. So I I took the advice that I was given, as it was given. Um that that they that 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 an extension, a project extension um is. A po- is a possibility. I have I have no reason to um. Refute the the response that we received from the province.
Okay, I I appreciate that, Kim. Um. But there's no guarantee that they would continue to allow us to have those beds either.
We don't have development agreements for either project at this stage.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh Deputy Warden McQueen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, County Council, and uh thank you for coming today, Andrew and staff. Um, a few things, uh just. Sort of a couple of points with regards to this particular subject on this particular zero land matter. Um, the part about the beds, um just from saying that is if. If this is the thought that this project was going to be deferred for a period of time, would we not, I guess I asked a question, would we would we want not want that guarantee that we are able to hold those beds? Um, just in the sense of having that conversation before the decision is put in front of this. Council, um other than there's sort of those conversations, but uh like like everything else. So I think that would. If that's something that members around this uh. You can't call the table anymore or on the screen are using that as a consideration and saying it's being held for maybe two years. I I personally myself, I would want us to have that in writing to say, yes, it is, it is held to twenty twenty four or whatever that. Period of time is. I did put a call in to uh our local M V P, Bill Walker. And uh he was uh going to have a conversation with Mr. Phillips. He just called me just at the beginning of the meeting when I went off the screen and I took the call. And and basically what he's telling me, there is no guarantee. Uh, you know, if a project comes up with regards to in the ministry and and uh we're not ready and it's uh another project needs the allocation. They could be used for a separate project. And and that's what he told me. And I asked him, can I use that? Or can I say that today? And he said, yes. But there's just no guarantee that. Uh from his conversation with the minister. So I think we need to formalize that. Very much so. I think that's a very pivotal thing on for information of of the decision that's in front of us. Today. I don't know if there's any comments, uh Madam C E O, Madam C A O or on that.
The approval we have, we submitted two separate proposals to the province under two separate um calls for application. We received um approval to proceed with both projects. Um, they've undertaken licensing review for both projects. They don't complete the development agreement aspect of this until much later in the process. And that's where Andrew and his team come in because there's a significant amount of detail that's required. Um in order to um complete and execute those development agreements. So. The two projects are in exactly the same place at this time. I would say that um. Should this council direct uh that they felt a a delay was an appropriate next step? Then it would be up to us to go back and work through our uh project management staff at the Ministry of Long Term Care. To advise them that council was seeking a delay and to um negotiate with them uh a date beyond twenty twenty five. Um that they would be uh looking for completion of the project.
So I would just say, uh I. I'm just going to interrupt you a little bit here, Councillor McQueen. Um I I realize that we are anxious to discuss the motion, which is to come uh uh next. Um on the issue of cause, but for right now, I would like us to really focus in on take advantage of the presenter, Mr. Rodriguez. Who's talking to us about the variance in cost. Um so the two eighty to four hundred. Um which he was asked to address. That's what's on the agenda right now. So let's try to leave our questions there.
Okay, thank you. I was just picking up on the last speaker on the point that that was being made, and I thought I would sort of follow through on on that. So um cost, yes, cost. So um back. On the Sienna report that was presented to a previous county council. Uh in two thousand and sixteen, there was a detailed uh. A detailed costing presented in a report of a hundred and sixty bed. Um. Excuse me, I'm gonna put my glasses on. I guess that's the age I'm getting to. I certainly need glasses. Uh a standard hundred sixty bed has been costed. And um so out of that costing, it's very detailed. It's very public. It's in the Sienna report. Uh that was presented to County Council in two thousand and sixteen. And it breaks it down very, very succinct and and to break down to um. Well, everything in the sense of even, you know, if there are uh trimming and 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 that, it breaks it down, you know, very much detail, no different than if anybody was building a house. You'd want to know what your cost, uh you know, and and certainly fairness to wherever we are in this process is is a cost for that as well. But during that time, the Sienna report in two thousand and sixteen said for a new home, not a rebuild or not an addition. Was a cost of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that was two thousand and sixteen, mind you, that was uh five years ago. And obviously, the cost of of of. Construction and and a lot of different things have changed since two thousand and sixteen, but that was a benchmark that we were provided. At that time from Sienna, so who is at that time, we were getting a lot of information from uh for. Starting this process with long term care in in Gray County. Uh just as the other day, and and we have talked a little bit about the Southbridge project, you know, sound. The hundred sixty uh bed project. And certainly, uh Graham Construction um are the. The contractor that are uh developing and and uh constructing constructing that uh that particular uh building. I gave him a call the other day, never talked to him before in my life, and we talked for about an hour and a half about his project. And all the aspects of of that and and the parts around his construction and. As we're probably aware, he was awarded that project uh somewhere in. Twenty twenty one, sorry, uh twenty twenty, but because of COVID, he was unable to start to till twenty twenty one. And he's looking at a completion date of twenty uh July of twenty twenty two. I'm sure a quarter few people are are familiar. It's been referenced to here before. But I asked him the question and I asked him, like, could I share that, what this question with us today? And I said, what is your cost per bed? For constructing that uh that building? And he told me a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars is his cost in constructing that building. He said, yes, since uh he started, there has been increased pressure on certain aspects of of the building. And he said. If he was to go out and do that today, he would look at, he would probably have to increase his tendering cost. To anywhere from between fifteen and twenty percent, which would put you, you know, two hundred thousand or thereabouts. He he did comment that uh hey, we all know what's happened since COVID, construction and and demand and and everything is happening. And he certainly said. He is, he's experienced that is is himself. He's able, he's been able to work through that. He had a late start, but he is on on um on track and he is on 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 uh. On the on the sense of completion by July of twenty twenty two. But he did say what he's finding is there's starting to be a bit of stabilization in this in the um trades or in the in the building material. He did say. Yes, trades are something that um it's it's not necessarily to do with COVID, but it's just necessarily to do with. The aging baby boomers that are getting older. And as we know, and he referenced that age between fifty six and seventy five, and that's just. No different probably with regards to trades as teachers, nurses, doctors, everything in the, you know, that are in our uh society in a sense of. Those people and that cohort is is slowly um retiring and moving under that. And so it the it there is demands on. That part of of that uh sector and other sectors in the province of Ontario. But I, you know, he and I asked him again sincerely, can I use these numbers? And he says, yes, you could. Now, he's a design build and. And like I said, I don't know, I didn't know him from a whole round, but I I certainly had a conversation with him for an hour and a half. Uh. I think it was Tuesday afternoon and and so he. And he did say it was, you know, he was very grateful that a local construction company was able to get a project like uh as this. Uh in our local area. And he, you know, um as we probably represented from Owens Sound and others that know that. Southbridge was looking at a lot of different projects throughout the region for for a while, and then they finally settled to what they're doing today. He did it. He did explain or did it share a few other things with me uh as. He referred to the R B, an R B C study that was uh an economic forecast that was uh provided in May of this year, and it talked about. You know, the aging demographics and the increased demand for long term care year after year. And uh, you know, that waiting list will will definitely continue. And he also spoke about, like I said, the thirty percent. Of our population between fifty six and seventy five and ten percent of that is over seventy five. So. The demand for for those are are going to uh increase. Now, Mr. Warden, I'm maybe getting more in a philosophical part. Uh I don't know if you wish me to stop at this time, but I was, I have.
Just have you disclose your specific question to the uh to the delegate, to Mr. Rodriguez? I I understand your uh. Saying. Making a comparison to another project. I think that's a fair question. Uh but your specific question, now that you've mentioned that Southridge is uh one seventy five to two hundred. What is your specific question for the delegate?
Well, uh well, I guess the question is, is now he he was, he told me he was a design build and. And I guess my my question is, is how is he able to do that? Or how is that project able to be done at that at that price locally? And 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 maybe that's maybe, and he did say to me that, you know, um the province has looked at different ways of doing things from the past and and certainly what he is. And moving forward, he's, you know, design build and and certainly maybe that changes the the bottom line a little bit. But I guess my question is, is. How is he able to? Do that, a hundred and sixty bid uh facility in our area for that kind of money? And 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 allow me to show that today in in the sense of to the cost that and I'm not. Don't get me wrong, just I I'm raising it because I asked a question to him and and his number is 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 a is a quite a bit different than the number we're being. And I'm not, I I'm just raising.
I think I have the question. I I I think we understand where you're going with the question. I see our C A O has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I will um allow Andrew to answer um to the best of his ability. I would say, however. If this council is looking for a comparative analysis. And really wants to know what the differences are in cost. We would need to see those numbers, both from Graham Construction and from Southbridge. To understand the details in order to have any kind of a a specific comparison between the two projects. And the estimates that that uh we've seen here today, but I know Andrew has some thoughts, so please proceed, Andrew.
Yeah, sure. I I I I agree with those comments, Kim, in that to have a meaningful comparison, we would, we would essentially need to see a project budget and to to compare line across line. But just, I'd like to speak about a few factors that um that could ease, that are compounding factors when we look at total cost per bed. And that can, they can add up and they do add up very quickly. So the first item you touched upon it was escalation. And, you know, we talked about the time of tender and the twenty twenty two or um early twenty twenty three. And so that has been significant over the past few years. And um so so that alone would have uh. A significant cost increase based on projects that have been tendered um and are in construction or nearing construction. So that's the first piece. Second piece is looking at the size of the building. And I spoke about that briefly during the presentation. Uh if one operator may be targeting the very leanest building that complies with the long term care design manual. Other organizations may be looking to exceed that manual based on the programs and services they are offering. And that's where I noted that we see uh. Big swings in terms of the the gross floor area and dividing that by the number of residents. And that has a direct impact on the construction cost and the construction budget portion of your project budget. It could be as high as fifty percent, if not more, based on the size of the building. The third portion is post contract contingency. So if we look at setting, I'll I'll say a value between three and five percent for contingency. That's not. A number that would be part of your co- construction contractor cost, but that you you would also. Want to include that as part of your project budget to safeguard you or to to have some funds available for changes. Uh so o- off the bat, those are, those are three items that I I would want to look at in more detail when comparing because they are compounding factors. And the last one is just an adjustment by twenty eight to thirty percent, just trying to translate the construction cost to a project budget. Um, and so without having the benefit of analyzing that in great detail, these are four items that I think could. Could could add up and compound very quickly um in order to equate to the four hundred thousand dollar per bed benchmark.
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate those comments and and, you know, um. I, you know, I was going to ask to say, I, you know, there's probably, you can build a Chevy or you can build a Cadillac, and I guess it's it's the choice that you decide to build and. And and I would think, oh, I you 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 mentioned it, Andrew, that he would certainly have to meet a certain standard in order to be approved for those uh for those beds. I I was um at AMO, and I'm not sure of others here on the um on the uh. Meeting today attended the AMO um uh there was a a session on. Uh with regards to long term care last Wednesday at AMO, and there was four speakers, and one of them was Lisa Lewin. I guess I said that right, Lewin?
Levin.
Devin, yeah. And she's from the C E C E O of Advantage Ontario, it's Association of Ontario Nonprofit Organizations that uh. That are in Ontario. So I I asked the question at that session about the industry, about the cost of beds, and I'm waiting to hear back from um from her. And she's connected with me and she's just uh having. Having her staff get back to me on on that number two. So I'm, I've just started doing a little bit of homework on the sense of going across it as well. And it was a very good session and it talked about long term care. I hope uh others on this uh. Screen had a chance to look at it and if you haven't, go back and watch it. It's still available there to to be seen. So. Uh, I guess I guess the one last question I have is, we do know that there's also people care that are building um a home, I think in Meaford. Would be interested to know what sort of thoughts they are in a sense. And there's others around as well and. And that, but I guess my last question to you, Andrew, at this time um is. Is there a regional cost difference? Like if you were to build downtown Toronto, you mentioned about the cost of land and. I think um uh whoever talked about the land here, I think uh you you addressed that, but. Uh, certainly, is there, is there a different costing uh for for construction of long term care homes in the greater Toronto area or areas? Where there is larger urbanization versus a small town or or rural Ontario or other parts of Ontario? Are you seeing some? Some difference in costings there just in the sense of the locations of of where you're pulling those trades? The cost of living is certainly probably higher. I mean, certainly. We're catching up here in Gray County, but are you seeing any any different uh uh? Any different swings? And I'll I'll raise it because we're building a new hospital in uh in Markdale. And they were quite surprised how much lower it came in than they first anticipated on that tender as well. So. Um, Andrew, I don't know if you have any any comments.
No, it's it's a great question. And certainly, as we continue to develop the cost estimates with a professional quantity surveyor. Uh, the location of the project absolutely has a bearing. We have, we have seen it where um just access to labor. Uh, how how locally uh readily available is the labor? Do they have to commute? Um, what's the status of the of the market in general? If there's a lot of competing projects that are 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 closer to a metropolitan area, it could have, it could add cost pressures to. Some of the projects that are are more rural or that require a further travel distance. So. It is certainly very dynamic and it's something that we have to monitor and that's part of why. Uh, we are recommending these cost estimates progressively in a key milestones throughout the project. But in summary, yes, we do, we don't, we don't apply across the board um a construction cost per square foot. We we analyze it. We work with the cost consultant and define it based on the location of the project, and that does have a bearing.
And and possibly that's how Southbridge or Graham Construction is able to to keep maybe those costs down a little bit because he is using a lot of, he's a local construction company versus a a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Keegney, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. And Mr. Rodriguez, um, I do have a question, but I wanted to uh further the comment on the people care build in uh Meaford. Uh, that's being done by Van Dell Construction, who are somewhat local, a lot of uh Collingwood area. Um, but the cost for bid there is hundred ninety five thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, which I recognize doesn't include things such as landscaping. Site servicing, parking and and so on, but uh. I still am very interested in the in the comparative uh aspect. Um, but my question for you is. Can you share any insight with County Council? Um. Are you aware of uh new regulations coming down from the province in relation to COVID and? And any requirements for long term care changes in construction that may have impact on the costing? Does that factor into? Your four hundred thousand dollars per bed?
So that that's a very good question. Um, in terms of the design standards and equally importantly, the funding that is associated with the design standards. This is something that we actively monitor. Through communications with the Ministry of Long Term Care. And the latest indication that and and indication we have is that there are no anticipated changes with regards to the design manual. Um, that that would have some of those changes. And so. At what that means is that if any organization or client wants to implement some of those additional features. Uh, there would need to be an alternate source of funding to pay for those. It would not be paid for by the Ministry of Long Term Care. Uh, nor would there be an expectation that it is a requirement to add those features to receive the technical approvals. So. Um, what that includes, I'd say, is a very uh lean first stroke at some elements to. That could be added, uh such as improvements to mechanical systems, ventilation systems, surfaces for infection control. Uh, what it does not include is uh moving it towards more of a hospital standard. Um, that would be, that that would have a tremendous impact on the costs. And so, no, that is not factored in the four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, per bed estimate. And and again, we don't have any expectation that 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 will be a requirement from the Ministry of Long Term Care. That would be an an owner decision.
I muted myself. Counselor Keegney, anything else?
Um, thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, one additional question, if I may, from Mr. Rodriguez. Um, and I'm not sure um if if funding is really part of your uh. Of your uh knowledge, but I'm just, um, I'll throw my question out there anyway. Do you know, sir, if um there is any potential for funding from the federal government? Because I recognize long term care is potentially is predominantly uh. Controlled by the province, but are you aware of any potential funding sources federally?
I I I'd like to to get back to you on that. I know that different clients or organizations have pursued that. Sometimes it has to do with. The the designation that the home is seeking, if it's a Francophone home as an example. Uh, that would be one that I'm aware of, but uh no, no additional sources. But I would like to get back to you on that if I can.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, um. Andrew Rodriguez, thank you very much for the clarity in the presentation and also with your presentations during the. Uh, long term care redevelopment committee meetings. I'm looking at the slide deck uh that's presented today, page four, titled Milestone Cost Estimates. And would you please just, I guess, provide? Uh, further clarity with regard to bullet number two, uh level of accuracy on cost estimates increases as design development increases. Recognizing escalation, design, equipment, um programs all. Could factor into that. Could you identify what um schedule of milestones? We would expect to receive in terms of looking at um. Uh, adjusted numbers, uh if any, along along the completion of these projects. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So the the first milestone would be. It's very contingent upon hiring the architect and the engineer so they can start with their first phase of work. We'd anticipate this would be sometime towards the end of this year and early next year after the functional program has been completed. Uh, the next update after at at a high level would be thirty three percent design completion, sixty six percent and ninety nine prior to going out for tender. Um, and all that would happen towards the the pre tender estimate would happen towards the end of next year in twenty twenty two. And so there is, there is a certain amount of work that has to start. As as I mentioned before, we are working off. A benchmark based on what we are seeing across the province and other owners or client budget for, based on on real costs they are experiencing. Uh, but but there's a tremendous amount of work that has to be done for both sites where we are. Are leveraging some work that was done by by some concept plans and feasibility study. Uh, but that work really has to start to be able to to update the next iteration and do it in a meaningful manner.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Deputy Warden McQueen's hand, but before I go to you, sir, I just wonder if there's anyone else. I would like to. Uh, wrap up this discussion. So if there's anyone else that has a question, perhaps I'll allow you to go first and then. We can finish with Deputy Warden. McQueen. I see no other hands, so. Deputy Warden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Miss Ward. Just a quick question to Andrew. Maybe you addressed it. What do you see the escalation cost? Year after year after year, moving forward the next five to ten years? Do you do you have an idea what that could be like? So. Um, this year. Are we looking at a ten fifteen percent year over year? Like, do you have a night? Do you have a thought on that or? Uh, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to tell you to a point where it's going to be healthy. I just, I just wondered in your opinion. As time goes on, is your, and I mentioned the word about baby boomers and the part of people retiring, this the whole industry and stuff like that. Do you have a, do you have a uh idea what that escalation costs maybe year after year?
So that 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 is, to be quite honest, a bit of a crystal ball question and certainly like looking five years out in the future, I would be a. It would be a guess. Uh, but over the next couple of years, what what we are are seeing and hearing is is using about. Uh, up to five percent per year is is considered a reasonable factor. And and it is, it is a key number to to adjust based on market conditions as we go through these estimates. So. You know, that would take us to fi- five percent per year for the next couple of years till twenty twenty three. Um, anything beyond? It's very hard for me to comment on at this stage.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't expect COVID, did we? Thank you.
All right. Last hand is Counselor Silver.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and we've had a great discussion and certainly learning a lot. I'm I'm still. Uncomfortable that we're comparing apples and apples because. When you look, there's some rather large budget budget items like land, site servicing, which could be ten to thirty thousand dollars per per bed. And then I just found while we were talking a budget presentation from the Ontario Long Term Care Association that says. Development charges could be thirty five thousand dollars a bed in some municipalities. So. If these costs are in the comparator projects that we're using to come up with our. Four hundred thousand and these are costs that we don't have. I'd just like to be convinced that we are actually comparing. You know, apples and apples and not apples and oranges because, you know, ninety five fifty, the. Depending on where you put land costs, uh, you know, between one point three and three point nine million and site servicing may be the same. Um, that that's a difference of fifty five thousand to ninety five thousand dollars a bed. So we aren't talking about a few little add-ons like a lot of the other items, like, you know, how much is your? E P C M and and that kind of thing. So. Um, I just like to be assured that when we're we're using four hundred thousand dollars to make a very serious decision here. Um, that we are actually looking at data that is directly comparable to our project costs.
So if if I could add a point over there without without going into the specifics of the comparator projects, I I can say that. Uh, there are projects that do not have development charges and that have a. Uh, do not have, I'll I'll call it an exorbitant land cost that are that are arriving at this benchmark or forecasted at this benchmark. So. Um, I I I don't believe that this would would skew the number significantly, in my opinion, based on the references that we have pulled from. That being said, I think the the question of going through this budget and having a more up to date forecast. Um, there is work that needs to be done ahead and 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 I mentioned this, I think, in in response to to Ms. Robinson's question. Um, so this is our our best forecast at the moment based on the information we have available. But there's additional work that has to be done throughout the design development process to be in a position to update, to do another update in a meaningful manner.
Thank you, Madam C O.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just a just a minor point of clarification. Um, uh, O L T C A. Is the Association for the Private Sector Long Term Care Homes. And Advantage Ontario is the association that Gray County belongs to, which is the non for pro, not for profit and municipal homes. So that may account for a slight difference there when it comes to development charges.
Okay, Counselor Silver.
Yes, and but we're not just comparing when we come up with four hundred, we're not comparing private sector and. I would like to see that information that Andrew referred to where there is no land costs and development charges. And the cost was still four hundred thousand.
Through you, Mr. Warden, um. We would be, I think, looking for publicly available reports from other municipal homes. Um, from a, that level of detail is not likely not. Available um for a for a private sector build um. Or might be protected under Andrew's or other companies. Contracts as being proprietary, but certainly we can look if there's um municipal. Uh, developments that have come in front of council and provided detailed budgets. Um, we can certainly look for those. And 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 bring them back. I don't know, Andrew, if you've got any other suggestions.
No, I I agree with that. Um, there's certainly. The the same that would apply for Gray County for any sensitive information that's uh that's not publicly available. Uh. We wouldn't be in a position to be able to share that unless an organization would consent, but for any publicly available information, we can certainly do, we can certainly go through that.
Very good. Uh, you finished, Counselor Silver? I think he is. Counselor Mel, I see you have your hand up. I am looking throughout this thing up, so. Uh, if you have a question, please raise your hand now. I'm looking to bring this to a close and uh move on with the agenda. Counselor Mel.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And real quickly, I wonder. Uh, if Andrew has any insight, because there's a, there's a. A a theme of questioning here as to why the local builds that are happening now in the private sector are so much less or apparently. So much less expensive than what we're being suggested would be the cost in the public sector. And I'm wondering if Andrew has any insight as to. The style, I I know they have to meet the bare minimum. Of the build design standards. But. You know, we we continually hear from the public that. Or at least locally, the public are saying. We don't like what the private sector is doing. We think the public sector. Does a much better job of long term care. So I'm wondering if Andrew has any insight as to. What are the build design standards that are are variable to create? The perception or or real cost differences of the quotes or not the quotes, but of the estimates of the cost per bed. There 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 must be something to that. Because I can't imagine how a local contractor, as as Counselor McQueen has said, can build a long term care facility for a hundred and eighty thousand. Dollars per bed. And yet our cost is apparently going to be in the range of four hundred. Like, there there's got to be something to that, and I'm wondering if Andrew has any insight to that. Thank you.
Okay, so before Andrew answers, I believe that one of the answers he gave was that it was not simply limited to building design, although that may be a component. But Andrew, I'll let you go ahead and give your answer.
Yeah, so I I think one of the the two points I would make is that um. Whole organizations that are responsible or or manage multiple homes, there are some. Some efficiencies that can be gained from a space standpoint in terms of administrative staff and and how that is shared across homes. So that's. That's one element, but not the most, not the biggest element in in my opinion. What we look at is. The minimum standard to meet uh in order to receive the technical approval and the fact that many organizations choose to exceed it based on. The needs for their clients and the trends they see moving forward. So that could be, as an example, the size of a bedroom. Uh, making sure that it provides enough clearance for the staff members to be able to work with the residents. Size of the dining rooms, recognizing that a lot of the residents require. Um, mobility devices or or wheelchairs or or chairs that require more space. Same thing for lounge program and activity areas. So. Some organizations will uh will look to exceed it, and there is a funding implication, absolutely. But it is not a requirement by the ministry, nor is it funded by the ministry. So I think fundamentally. If you are seeking to meet. To to just meet the design manual, or if you look to exceed it, that will have a drastic impact on your construction cost and construction budget. And may be one of the contributing reasons uh why there is a large delta.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Bond.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew, I think the normal process for a contractor to put in a proposal to uh to work in this, they would go out and get. Subcontractors and suppliers. And they'd get quotes from them that they would lock in, I assume, before they uh go to the uh the owner. Uh, and give them their proposals. Is that accurate?
That's correct. So the uh, the project methodology that is being considered for this project is designed bid build. So at the time of tender. Um, it is assumed that a pre qualification process would be used ahead to to find a pool of. Available and capable general contractors to bid on the project. Those would then be invited to submit a bid. So along with their bid, they would submit a bid bond. Um, uh, the bonding requirements and and in order to meet the insurance requirements as well, and that's locked in. So at the time they submit that the bid and the bid bond. An evaluation would be. So at the time they submit that the bid and the bid bond, an evaluation would be complete. And if the bids are compliant, then the contract would be awarded to the lowest compliant bidder. So, uh, it's a very formal and, and structured and well-used process. And it's also a requirement prior to the ministry giving an approval to construct and award. So yes, there would be one single general contractor who would enter into contracts with various subcontractors for the trades.
So, so, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen is Mayor Owen Soundon meeting with, uh, Southbridge and their contractor, Mr. Graham was with them. So, uh, he would have put in his, uh, his, um, proposal to Southbridge twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So approximately three to four years ago, your estimates that you're giving us here is for three to four years, that being twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, I assume. So I think fair to say that there's probably one heck of a swing in prices over a six-day, eight-year, uh, span from when they would have started and been locked in in Southbridge to, uh, what we're trying to, uh, to, uh, assume we're going to be paying in twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that accurate?
So without knowing the specifics of their contract, uh, over that period of time, the compounding impact of escalation and what we've seen over the past year and a half, couple of years with the pandemic, has had a drastic impact. So I, I agree with that comment, that if you compare two projects over a six-year span, it, it, the pressure of the compounding impact of escalation is tremendous on projects.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potter. I believe you're muted, in case I can't hear you. Test again? Still not hearing you, sir. I know, it's frustrating. Perhaps I, I see, um, try it again? Yeah, definitely, still not working. Oh, there you are.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, uh, yes, my question was, uh, why not look at design build if that's what is, uh, keeping the cost down within the private sector? Why not look at design build?
Andrew?
So yeah, there are two project delivery models that are acceptable with the Ministry of Long Term Care. One of them is construction management, and the other one is design bid build. As, as part of our, our engagement with this project and process, we were, we were given as information that the project would be following a design bid build with a C C D C two contract. That being said, we are, um, I, I, there are pros and cons to both models, uh, in terms of, uh, what is being prioritized in terms of scope, quality, uh, risk and cost. Some models are more suitable to some organizations versus others. So I, I don't have any context to give, other than, uh, it was a, a, an assumption or requirement for us in our mandate that, um, to proceed based on the assumption that a C C D C two contract would be used and a design bid build methodology.
Yeah, uh, councillor McQueen, I'm just gonna say, giving you plenty of opportunity to speak. I do want to wrap this up, so I'm gonna ask you to keep it brief, please.
It's more of a point of clarity, uh, Mr. Warden. And certainly, uh, I thank the comments from the Mayor of Owen Soundon. Again, I, I just reached out to, uh, Mr. Graham on that. But I did ask the question, and he did say he got awarded in twenty twenty. But I asked the question if he was going up to day what that would be. And he said he would have to increase it fifteen to twenty percent. And he is a, he is a design build. So I did ask that question of what would be today. But he also did say he is seeing some stability happening in, in, uh, what he's doing as well in the industry. So, uh, not to debate, I just wanted to make sure that those points, and I'm sure anybody, uh, could reach out and speak to them on their own. He wasn't, uh, he was very open to anybody having that conversation. So I asked him that question. I said, is, is anybody else contacted you on this issue? And he said, no. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Warden, just for clarity.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, is there anything you wanted to add to that, Andrew?
No, I, I, nothing further to the points I've made.
Okay, very good then. Uh, it is now, um, well, sixteen minutes passed. I'm gonna suggest that we come back, we take a short break, maybe come back at, uh, twenty-five past, just to stretch our legs. Um, and Madam C A O?
Can I just ask if, um, I'm very conscious of, of Andrew's time here? Did, have, has everyone's costing questions been answered? I think that's what you were looking for, Mr. Warden. Because if so, I'm, I'm going to suggest, if it's okay with council, that we allow Andrew to be excused.
Yes. I see heads nodding, and I don't see any heads shaking. So with that said, Andrew, I'm gonna thank you very much, uh, for your time, for, uh, giving us this, uh, this information. It's been, uh, very useful. Uh, we will continue with our deliberations. Let's come back at
Thank you.
Thank you again, at eleven twenty-five sharp. Okay. Thanks, Olivia. Madam Clerk, do you have quorum?
We have ten, which is quorum.
It's quorum, yeah. Okay, um. Olivia? Yeah, we can give it a minute, but, uh, perhaps, Olivia, I don't know how much time you need to queue things up, but maybe we can get things queued up.
Actually, Mr. Warden, we are still recording and live streaming. We just put a, we'll be right back on the screen for the public.
If you would like, I can continue to have the, we will be right back screen.
Just leave that for a second. I think we have barely a quorum, so maybe we'll just allow a few seconds. There we go.
We have, we have more now. We're just waiting on a couple.
Good to go, Olivia, if you are.
Yep, all ready to go.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We'll proceed to item number five on the agenda, which is a notice of motion by councillor O'Leary. That motion is being seconded by councillor Burley. Now, um, Alar, you, sorry, councillor Silver, you have your hand up.
It's a point of order, Mr. Warden. I, I believe this motion is a reconsideration. And as such, there should have been written notice under a procedural bylaw, written notice given at the last count, meeting of council, under section twenty-one twelve of our procedural bylaw. The reason I'm, I'm saying that this is a, um, reconsideration is that as late as May thirteenth, uh, which was moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Mackey, we approved, um, the, uh, successful bid, um, of, uh, Colliers in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand in response to an R F P, which was for the development of both the Rockwood Terrace and Gray Gables. Now, earlier, we heard the C A O said that it's a two-part contract, and they could just, uh, remove one. But that would also change the, the, the scope of the total contract, which was, um, you know, nine hundred thousand. So since that happened, uh, as late as only a couple of months ago, and it's well within the one-year period, then this motion is asking us to reconsider it because the consequences of this would be to, um, of this motion, if it was passed, would be to amend that contract and, and, and not follow through on it, uh, in its entirety. So, um, I'm, I'm suggesting that this is, um, a reconsideration. And as written notice was not provided at the last council meeting, uh, only verbal, that then, that it is improper to hear it at this time.
Thank you. I'll ask our clerk to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, my interpretation of the notice of motion is, is a request to pause the redevelopment of Gray Gables. It, um, doesn't mean it's stopping. It doesn't mean that we're not moving, um, we're going to, um, not take the, um, additional beds or anything like that. It, it is simply to pause the development at this time. But Colliers did put in a, a bid with both options there. But this is simply, it, it's not a cancellation, it is just a pause.
Okay, um, anything else on this, councillor Silver?
Well, it's only a pause if we don't lose the beds. So it is a substantial change to the contract, which was approved by council. So, and that is why I'm claiming it is a reconsideration.
Uh, councillor Robinson, did you want to weigh in on this, or did you have another, uh, issue to raise?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. I have, uh, another issue and request, and would like to move that along at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so dealing with, uh, councillors, however, I would say that based on the clerk's comment that the item is properly before us. Uh, councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I would request that the, pardon me?
Mr. Warden, I'd like to appeal your decision to the rest of council.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Let me find.
I'd like a recorded vote.
Is there debate? Uh, I, I give you a second to organize yourself, Madam Clerk. But is there a debate on, uh, the motion, um, well, the challenge to the, uh, Warden's ruling?
Just give me one moment, sir.
No worries.
So, uh, so section nineteen point ten, uh, Warden to rule on point. The Warden's ruling is final unless it is challenged, sixteen, 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 nineteen point eleven. Any member may challenge the ruling of the Warden immediately following the ruling. Any member may challenge the ruling of the Warden immediately following the ruling. In the event a member challenges the ruling, council will vote on the ruling immediately without debate.
Yes, I see that. Okay, so, and it is a majority vote according to nineteen sub thirteen. Right?
Correct.
A simple majority.
Correct.
So it's not a weighted vote. Okay, so we will have then, Madam Clerk, anything else?
I'm just. So majority vote means an affirmative vote by more than one half of the members. I'm just, I'm just looking for, to ensure that it is not a weighted vote. So section one point two double G, recorded vote, written record and name of vote and member of every member voting on the question, and the matter is weighted other than motions that require a two-thirds vote. So this will be a weighted vote, Mr. Warden.
Okay.
Okay, on the appeal for reconsideration.
Okay, so just to be clear, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you, Madam Clerk.
No, that's, that's fine. It is, we are voting on your decision, the appeal challenged by council or so ever, on your decision that this is not reconsideration.
Right. My decision is that the item was proper, is properly before us. So I guess the vote will be, how do we word this then? Do you support, do you support the appeal or not support the appeal? Would that be the proper way to phrase it, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so a vote for yea, it's a vote in favor of the appeal, and a vote for nay, it's a vote to uphold the Warden's rule. Madam Clerk?
Sorry, I'm going to go to our C A O for just a second.
I'm sorry, Madam C A O, yes.
Is the vote about the appeal, or is the vote about the Warden's ruling?
The vote is about the Warden's ruling. So if, I'm sorry, if you are in support of the Warden's ruling, you're going to say in favor. If you are not in support of the Warden's ruling, you're going to vote opposed. Okay, is that clear?
Anyone have any questions about that? We're all good? Okay, then you can call the vote now.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mackey.
Opposed.
Counselor Gamble.
Opposed.
Counselor Burley.
In favor.
Counselor Carlton.
In favor.
Counselor McQueen.
Opposed.
Counselor Desai.
In favor.
Counselor Patterson.
In favor.
Warden Hicks.
In favor.
Counselor Columbus. Counselor Columbus.
She's muted. She's putting her thumbs up. I don't know if that counts. Perhaps we'll give her a chance to work out.
You are muted, Counselor Columbus. Hope she's trying to.
Can you do this?
Thumbs up.
In favor. Thank you. Counselor Keveney.
Opposed.
Counselor Body.
In favor.
Counselor O'Leary.
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury.
In favor.
Counselor Millen.
Yea.
Counselor so ever.
Opposed.
Counselor Potter.
Opposed.
Counselor Robinson.
Opposed.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Opposed.
The motion is carried fifty to forty.
Okay, then we'll move on. Counselor Robinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, I would request a separation in the notice of motion so that we're dealing with Rockwood Terrace separate from Gray Gables. And I would suggest that paragraph one and paragraph two be reworded so that it is specific to whereas Gray County has received approval for, from Ministry of Long-Term Care for the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace in the one twenty-eight beds. And also now therefore be it resolved that the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace move forward in order to meet the twenty-two-five redevelopment timeline. Separate that out with regard to Gray Gables, which would be the Class A facility. No date on redevelopment, but that the ministry has approved the redevelopment of beds and that that consideration be for a poll. So if that could be separated out, I would move that. Thank you.
Okay, so with your assistance, Madam Clerk, I want to make sure that I understand and that everyone understands what is being proposed. So I'm hearing that there would be an amendment to the first two clauses, two first, first two whereas is, and then separating out the vote, which is the last two clauses. So voting first on Rockwood Terrace and then voting separately on Gray Gables. Do I have that all right, Counselor Robinson?
That is correct.
And Madam Clerk, I'm now in your hands as to how we proceed with operationalizing this request.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. It's my opinion that the separation will not impact the decision for Rockwood Terrace. The build for Rockwood Terrace has been supported previously by this council, and whether the motion on the floor to pause Gray Gables passes or not, the development or redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace will carry on. If it, if the notice of motion passes, it will carry on. If it doesn't pass, then the decision of council is already on, excuse me, in the minutes to approve and support the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace.
Okay, so, Mr. Sheriff, I might?
Yes.
For the abundance of clarity and understanding, however, the vote is result, whatever the resulted vote is, Rockwood Terrace redevelopment continues to meet the deadline, the construction deadline of twenty-two-five. It is not in this consideration. The consideration of this notice of motion is for the pause on Gray Gables only.
I would say that is correct. My reading of the motion is that it's trying to clarify just that, Counselor Robinson. I think the mover is saying that they want to confirm that Rockwood will proceed and that at this time we'll be, we'll be holding on the Gray Gables project.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, for your interpretation, and I do rely on that, and are obviously our clerk, our professional clerk. Thank you for that clarity. So with that, if it's not required for the separation to vote for anything on Rockwood, and it's specific to Gray Gables, then I will withdraw my request as per the information provided by the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I, it's time to turn things over to Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. I think for now, I just want to be sure to, to be clear. I, I made this motion because it has nothing to do with council's decision. I totally respect council's decision on going ahead with the rebuild of, of Gray Gables. I just think that with the number that's before us, we were, we're, it would just be more responsible to stagger these two projects, and especially when we don't have to do Gray Gables right now. So I think I'll just leave it at that for now, Mr. Warden. I will. It's more to say later on, but I'll, I'll wait for other comments. Thank you.
You're unmuted, Mr. Warden.
There we go. My apologies. Comments or questions from anyone? I see Counselor Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. A couple of questions that come to mind before I have a number of comments here is, one, is with the intention of the mover of this notice of motion, should we not be clear with the provincial government that those beds will be held to a period of time? If we don't have a guarantee with those, as we know, the mandate of this current provincial government is to build long-term care beds, and the allocation of this is to be in the ground for twenty-two-five. If another project comes along, do we run the risk of losing these beds? And that's sort of what I, as I mentioned earlier on today from my conversation with our local M P P, who had spoke to the Minister of Long-Term Care, Mr. Phillips, just this morning. And so that is a question I think we should verify before we even consider this and maybe deferring this notice of motion from that aspect of, of getting that clarity. Because if we take a pause and we lose those beds, then what? Well, basically, I asked that question this morning, and we would have to reapply. And so I, I find that is, is very serious, and I just think that that is something that we should verify before we make this decision. I'll leave that as, as a question to come back. I will. How do you wish me to proceed, Mr. Warden? I do have a number of other comments, but do you wish me to have that question addressed first, or how do you wish? Because I do have other comments.
Certainly, what I hear you saying is that you are leaning towards a motion to defer debate of this until there's some other confirmation. I think you're perfectly within your right to bring that motion if you wish at this time.
Okay, then I will maybe park that for now. I will give other, other comments here and may, I see the clerk shaking their head that I can come back to that at a different time. So.
Go ahead.
So I better put my glasses on, because I do have.
Just one sec. I think our C A O wants to weigh in on something here, so maybe I can acknowledge her.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And so just to be clear, the province, we did ask the question about an extension to the completion date for the project, and we were told that that would be acceptable. I, I don't know how much more the province will be able to provide to us other than, other than that approval through the staff to some future date. Because they're not, at this stage in the, in the process, there aren't, the development agreements, as I said earlier, have, have not been prepared, nor are we in a position to prepare them. So all we can really have is what we have now, which is an agreement on an extension. What we could get further clarity on is exactly how far into the future that extension might be granted.
Mr. Warden?
Okay, I may come back to that, to that point. Thank you for that, Madam C A O.
You're welcome.
So from a report from the Conference Board of Canada, I'm not gonna put my glasses back on. Canada will need an additional one hundred and ninety-nine thousand long-term care beds for twenty-three-five. With any new beds, the, there is also a positive effect to our local economy. Our population is aging rapidly. And also the A L C patients that are in our local hospitals. In two thousand seventeen, the cost per day for a A L C patient is nine hundred and forty-nine dollars versus a hundred and forty-two dollars. And this is going back to the Conference Board of Canada's report and dating in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand fifteen, two hundred, twenty-six thousand five hundred people were on the waitlist for long-term care. That's six years ago. They suggest by twenty-twenty-five, the demand for long-term care beds will grow by three point three percent per year. We, as I mentioned before today, that we know that our, our cohort of the baby boomers is going to move forward. Currently, right now, thirty percent of our population is between the ages of fifty-six and seventy-five. In the next fifteen to twenty years, moving forward is basically from seventy-six to ninety-five as that age group moves forward. Certainly that, you know, we see that there's going to be a huge increase with regards to long-term care, and we're seeing it. And some are, some are saying a crisis. Some are saying it could be a catastrophe if we don't do something differently. And again, I go back to that part. From a provincial standpoint, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars for hospital, hospital bed, A L C patient versus a long-term care. You can see why there is a push to get more long-term care beds in our system. And so as time goes on, and so basically, if there's going to be this huge backlog of, of waitlists, so and if there are needs that people have to go to the hospital, guess what? Your hospitals fill up. That means less beds for, for other reasons for healthcare. So we know the demand is increasing. In two thousand and, so further from that, in two thousand seventeen, acute care hospital bed costs were six point seven times more than long-term care, and you use it in a yearly dollar of four hundred and ninety-five thousand versus seventy-four thousand per pay, per, per individual. Do the math. So going back to the, the whole part of waitlist, the, the whole part of, I think we're missing on the other side of this equation, is the pros, the positive things of moving forward with this redevelopment. It certainly, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the economic spinoffs of, of jobs, destruction, a number of parts moves forward in every community, and it's been proven that it does, does have those spinoffs from there. And are we able to increase our beds? I understand that the new models are looking at sixty percent private versus forty percent semi-private. From C H S, we haven't had that, that modeling or that, that report, as I understand, that shows what we can do with regards to the current Gray Gables. And certainly, I, I've been asking a few questions on that, and certainly, as we know, the man for long-term care is going to be there, but so is the demand for assisted living, senior care, and a number of those parts. And we talked about the whole idea of the campus of care, and we certainly have a facility that's, you know, I think it was commissioned in nineteen ninety-nine, so a facility that's twenty-one, twenty-two years old, that has the ability to be converted into senior living or assisted living or a number of parts right next door to a new build of a long-term care facility, right next door to a brand-new hospital, right next door to a community health clinic. I mean, you look at that whole scenario, I mean, we're in a very good spot by moving forward with that redevelopment. And it doesn't matter where the long-term care beds are in Gray County. It just shows that there's going to be demand across the province and across the country. And I think as we heard from Andrew a few minutes ago, a consultant, to say that is, you know, conservatively, and I, as you all heard, I wasn't trying to put him, you know, necessarily in the spot, but he could see a five percent increase year over year as we put this on the shelf, or as we defer, or if we can put the beds off to a couple of years. I'm not sure what, but I would say that, you know, as we go back to that, what's it going to cost us down the road? And, you know, I think there's questions around, I think, you know, the Cadillac or the Chevrolet, you know, what is, you know, a standard of care? And we certainly want to make sure it's being developed to the proper facility that would care for our, our elder, elders down the road, or whoever needs. elders down the road or whoever needs those long-term cares, because not necessarily you have to be a very senior person to need a long-term care. We experienced that back a few years back where there was a person in a car accident that needed long-term care at the Great Gables site. So sort of wrapping up, Mr. Warden, you know, we're at a point where a number of years back, you know, it was said, we can't, we won't be getting any more beds. We won't be getting more beds. So holy smokes. We've got opportunity to not only expand Rockwood from a hundred to a hundred and twenty, but also expand Great Gables to the hundred and twenty-eight bed facility. And we had that conversation about efficiencies, about a sixty-six-bed facility is, you know, the efficiencies aren't the same as bringing it to a hundred and twenty-eight. And I think it's interesting that we we had that debate, that discussion, that a hundred and twenty-eight-bed facility seems to be that that sweet spot of of not only for Great Gables and Rockwood, but we see people care as a hundred and twenty-eight-bed facility in Newford. So the time is here, and I, you know, I strongly say that I don't think we can wait any longer because, as I have heard, you know, a crisis, but a catastrophe could be coming with regards to our long-term care needs. And the the sooner we get moving and putting that into place, the sooner that we'll be able to have those beds in place for the desired needs that are here. And I guess the other question I do have, and I'm not sure to you, Mr. Warden, to the CA or to Jennifer, our Director of Long-Term Care, is, I don't know if she's able to provide, what are our long-term care waiting lists today at our at our facilities? I apologize, I should have maybe reached out sooner. It was just something I was going through in my notes and you know, as we know, there are waiting lists, but I don't know if that's available today to provide to us or not, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, I see you're present. Are you in a position to answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I don't have those details at my fingertips, but it's absolutely information that I can bring back to council.
Thank you. Also, McQueen, with you.
Now, I may have one more comment, but I'll leave it to later.
Okay, Counselor Suaver, you're next.
Yes, um. So just some information maybe for counsel with respect to the Ministry of Long-Term Care. We have been working with the private developer here that wants to bring the long-term care home to Thornbury. And we have had some discussions with the ministry on the availability of beds because you know, this developer has not yet submitted an application and, you know, we wanted to make sure that beds were available before we committed council time to it. So the the information we're getting is that there are beds available because some projects have lagged behind schedule and the ministry is desirous of getting development agreements in place in very short order. So the faster you can move, the better. If you can have a development agreement in place by early next year is the preferred thing, because the government did promise, I think, thirty thousand beds, and they want to make sure that those are going to be built in a timely manner. So that being said, you know, I think I'd like to say that the degree on which we should spend dollars on long-term care has been a topic of debate for some time. In in Great County, there are three beds which service different parts of the county or spread out throughout the county, and we don't have to rehash that debate, but I would note that the previous council voted to close Great Gables. The electorate then rejected this decision and stressed the need for more public beds because they perceived them to be of higher quality than the private beds. Now, whether that perception is real or not is hard to say, but certainly I think the high quality of our our long-term care beds that are run by the county was demonstrated through COVID where we we had a very safe environment for our seniors, and I think this is what our citizens want. And and that's what they voted for in the next election, to the degree that that many of those who voted for the closure of Great Gables were defeated. And I would point out that our council, the new council, respecting the decision of their electorate rescinded the closure of Great Gables and voted to keep open and did apply for the new beds, which we're now talking about delaying and possibly losing. And I I haven't, you know, I hadn't heard anybody guarantee, although the ministry is willing to talk to us about an extension. Certainly, what I've heard indicates that if somebody were to come forward and and apply for beds and say, we can get it, the shovels in the ground before next June, you know, it those beds, I think, would be gone. That's just my opinion, but, you know, the political realities indicate that the government promised something, and they promised the beds by a certain date, and they're going to deliver those beds to people who can deliver and not stall. So you know, I would just urge council members to consider what the public wants. And, you know, if by the next election, we will know whether we will have lost those beds or not. We don't know this now. We're making the decision. And certainly, it will, there will be on record who voted for this motion that caused us to lose those beds if we do in fact lose them. Thank you.
You're on mute, Mr. Warden. I muted myself. Sorry. I want to thank Counselors Suaver. Next is Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden and County Council. I know this decision is weighing heavy on on all of us, but a few things I just want, I've got a lot of points, but a few things, and Counselor McQueen touched on on certainly someone. The the report that he was referencing, that was commissioned by the Canadian Medical Association. And the key findings in that, and as Counselor McQueen mentioned, Canada will need an additional one hundred and ninety-nine thousand long-term care beds by 2035. When you break that down to a population of a hundred thousand, which is roughly what Great County has, that means Great County is going to need an additional four hundred and ninety-seven beds by 2035. So we're looking at, you know, a development of an additional sixty-two beds, or sorry, sixty-six beds. So absolutely, it's it's required. The other key findings were the new beds will require approximately sixty-four billion in capital spending and a hundred and thirty billion in operating spending between 2018 and 2035. And all those figures are in two thousand and seventeen dollars. The investment and spending will have a positive effect on the economy, contributing a total of two hundred and thirty-five billion of real GDP and supporting an average of a hundred and twenty-three thousand jobs per year. The cost-benefit analysis of the new beds outweighs the cost, even without considering improved health outcomes. So, you know, we've been hung up on costs, but we really haven't looked at the, you know, the benefit analysis. You know, the new the new beds, if, you know, council agrees to them, would bring in, you know, just in per diem, would bring in four million, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's four million, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of, you know, provincial money. That's money that's circulated within our economy. So that's growth. That's good-paying jobs. That's more houses. And, you know, we talk about growth, you know, we're hearing over and over again about the growth that's happening in Great County. A lot of that growth is happening in the southeastern part of Great County. If Southgate has three thousand new beds, or sorry, beds, three thousand new homes, that's going to be over three million dollars in county levy right there. That's the redevelopment cost covered. I am very concerned that if we don't go forward with this project, we could lose those beds because there's a lot of other municipalities that want them. There's been discussion around, you know, the quality of of care. I mean, my hat goes off to our long-term care folks, you know, that are in the municipal-run sector. They've done an amazing job. They've helped us through COVID. You know, we didn't have any, you know, serious, well, we didn't have any death. You know, when the COVID did break out, it was well-contained. You know, our senior staff were a resource to the private sector. That's all part of the investment that we've made in our municipal long-term care. So it's very important. And Jennifer, thank you very much to you and your team for all that work. There is, at the end of the report, I just want to read the summary, the very last paragraph in the report. And because I I think it's very fitting for today's discussion, just bear with me. So it says, in summary, our forecast using conservative assumptions still finds a dramatically increased need for spending on long-term care. The scale of the challenge is large enough that it cannot be delayed for long or be addressed with ad hoc measures. It will need to be, it will not be a long time before the large baby boom generation begins requiring long-term care in earnest. Now is the time for decision-makers and other key stakeholders to begin addressing the future needs of our population. I think that, you know, says it all right there. So those are my comments right now. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I've jotted down a few points here. It's it's my voting record is clear. I've always been in favor of keeping Great Gables a publicly-owned entity, an entity owned by Great County. The concern I have is that there's members in council today who are perhaps suggesting that we should push forward with the new build at Great Gables regardless of the cost. A twenty-twenty Fraser Institute report talks extensively about Canada's growing aging population, not growing population, because we're expecting to see a population decline. So it's talking about the aging population. It's talking about the tax burden on future generation. It talks about the increasing debts and deficits. Again, these have been exacerbated by the pandemic that we're in and and the impact that will have on future generations. The future already looks bleak from that point of view. And we're talking about adding more debt at our the local level onto that. I think it was Counselor McQueen that mentioned about maybe getting a Chevy instead of, I can't remember if it was a Corvette or or a different vehicle, but here's the thing, if we don't have money for a Chevy, maybe we stick to the Honda Civic we have right now. Sure, it's not flashy. It's not fancy, but it it does the work. It works for us. Again, there was mention of the, you know, we we have the beds right now, which is great, but we don't have the money to build the roof over those beds. So at what point do we say perhaps it's not, we we just don't have the money to do that? Because when I look at my screen right now, Warden Hicks, I see seventeen people who wanted to lower the tax last year, the tax rate last year, by taking one percent out of reserve artificially, I might add, lower the tax. So to now say that we should provide an increased level of service when we did that last year, to me, as a member of the generation to come after, doesn't seem quite right. There's also talk about the electorate wants this new bill. There's been numerous social media posts since the last meeting we had where the electorate has said they never asked for a new bill. So who are we building this for? And and lastly, and this is perhaps more of a personal point of contention, Warden Hicks, but I do not appreciate it when when I hear things about, well, you know, the next election is coming up and it'll be on record on who voted how. Because the difference, Warden Hicks, and this, these aren't my words. Someone else said them, and I can't remember who said them. The difference between leaders and politicians, Warden Hicks, is that politicians think of the next election. Leaders think of the next generation. I'm not saying I'm I'm a leader, but I will have to live with the next generation. So I do have a an interest in making sure that I my kids and their kids are are able to continue living in the world that we leave for them. So with all due respect, I think to bring up the election every single time, because they come every four years. I I once had a debate with a friend of mine on what is good policy? And at the time, and this was about four years ago, and at the time, I strongly believe that good policy is policy that gets elected. Increasingly, as I've grown older and have developed white hair in my in my head, I've come to believe that good policy isn't necessarily what gets elected. Good policy is good policy on its own merits, not on on the basis of its success in an election. So with that, I I do think that perhaps it's time for a pause because we're not losing the beds at Great Gables. We're perhaps losing if we're going to use a negative word, we're perhaps losing the additional beds we could have got. But are we really losing those beds if we could ill afford those right now anyways? And once again, I'll reiterate, my voting record does show that I voted to keep Great Gables, but at this point, perhaps we need to take a pause and figure out whether we can even afford the Chevy, or maybe we should stick to the Honda Civic. Thank you very much, Warden Hicks, for for indulging me.
Oops, I keep muting myself. Counselor Hutchinson, you are next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, everyone. I just have a, through you, Warden, to the staff, I it's just, it's, I'm very curious about if we can draw, what is the financial impact per house or per tax base if we have across the entire county? Whether the build is, we've heard figures at two hundred thousand and we've heard them at four hundred. So what would be the cost per household per month, if you will, whether it be two hundred thousand or four hundred? If that, if it's a number that, you know, if it's five, five dollars a month or ten bucks, that's kind of what I'm curious in, because I think what we're doing here is we're talking huge numbers. And I think when you break it down and you amortize it over twenty-five years or whatever the the case may be for the build, I think we need to look at what's affordable monthly. That's one thing, and I I think the other thing is is well, I'll just leave it at that. That's just a general question. I would like to know what the the cost could be per house. And that's at rate now. And beyond that, we are experiencing huge growth here. So as things grow, it actually will be less. So I just, I would like to know if we can get that number. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hutchinson. I believe the cost or impact on the levy was addressed in previous reports. But perhaps our CEO or perhaps Mary Lou could add some more.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think there were two aspects to the the report that was brought to the last meeting, one of which was our the the immediate impact on to the bottom line. And the and the second part was really the impact to the long-term operations of the county and the just our own debt management policy, et cetera, and the kind of thresholds of of debt that are really accepted as as best practice from a financial perspective. I don't know, Mary Lou, if you're that fast with math that that you could have break broken down. We know that I think we were looking at twenty twenty-two and had a rough idea that this was going to be somewhere close to a five, likely a five percent increase on on the county levy and then whatever would happen at the at the lower tier. But I'll let you speak to that, Mary Lou.
So in the report, we ran the numbers at four hundred thousand for bed for both homes at three percent interest. And that would require a levy increase of about two point three million dollars. And at the current rates, right now, one percent in twenty twenty-one is just over six hundred and ten thousand. That would be about a three point seven six percent increase that you would sorry, spread over probably four years to to ramp up to your diventure payment. And then if you look at it, four percent, doing both homes, the levy increase is about two point nine million dollars. And using one percent in today's dollars, that's just a four point seven two percent increase. And again, you would spread that out over a number of years and Counselor Desai is correct. We have one point two one for asset management, and we also have the one percent for the affordable housing. And in the twenty twenty-one budget, that was funded from reserve. And I'd have to calculate the cost per household.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No, it's it's just, I am curious because we always talk percentages and and wonderful things like that. And I think just to the general public, they have a hard time. And I think just to the general public, they have a hard time trying to, to, to get to that number. And, you know, the actual dollar amount is, is really what I, I think is what I'd like to hear anyways. You know, if it's a hundred dollars a household or it's two hundred, whatever, whatever the number is, I think that's kind of what, I've been asked by several people, what does that mean? Cost per month, per me, per house, and what do we have, fifty, fifty-eight thousand houses across? That's, that's, I think is, is my angle. Thank you.
My understanding is that one percent is about six hundred thousand, Mary Lou?
Six hundred and ten, five hundred roughly this year, yes.
Right. So if you take that one percent, whether it's one, two, three, four, you multiply by the, by one, two, three or four in terms of percentage on the levy and then divided by the population, that might give you the number you're looking for, Counselor Hutchinson.
If I may, the other reference that you could use is in the front end of the budget. Every year, we break down the levy increase on a, per, you know, per hundred thousand of assessed value as a, as a way of, of calculating that as well. So that would be another place to look for that number.
Okay, I do not see any other hands. Is there anyone else wishing to weigh in before we call a vote? Counselor Queen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And so just to summarize a few points, and maybe I should say Honda and Lexus, maybe that's a better analogy versus a Chevy and Cadillac. But, you know, there is economies of the scale that I think is, is part of why we have talked about this project moving forward together. They certain the proximity between Rockwood and Great Markdale is about twenty-minute drive. So I think we would all, you know, if we put this on pause, you know, you know, there, there's a possibility of, of not achieving that economies of scale. We could talk about the D C charge and maybe we need to look at increasing that or, or where we can start to generate better revenue for our long-term care. This is the direction that we feel that county councils should go. Again, Counselor Mackey did mention a part about the housing growth and not only in Southgate, we're seeing it in Great Highlands, we're seeing it in, in the mountains, we're seeing it all over the place. West Gray, we're seeing it everywhere. I mean, we had a tour of, of Hanover, Mr. Warden, last year there. And, and, you know, you're having growth, Old Sound's having growth, it's, it's, it's a great thing. And, and so we know that not only are we talking about the, the levy increase, but we have to take a, take a look at, and we've been around this table long enough that we know growth does help the, the bottom line. And, and so, you know, maybe one percent growth is maybe a number that we can start looking at. And, and that sort of helps offset that levy increase. It's about choices, it's about investment. We're talking about investments, investment in our future. But that same generation that we're talking about certainly invested in the, in the, in the infrastructure and the society that we have today. And I think that's, you know, we talk about plant a tree. Well, you know, most certainly, we, we'd be planting that tree before that, for that, you know, expansion of long-term care. But all those that planted that tree before us and, and have the enjoyment of, you know, and I look at just as a side, you know, you know, long-term care is, I think, one of those high level of important things for our society. But certainly generations before us felt there was a need to build arenas and build schools and build other things in front of us for us to enjoy today as well. So, you know what, we're at a point, and I sort of see around the table that everybody's maybe made their decision on that. But I just think that it's a pivotal point with low interest rates and everything. There's a lot of assumption there, but there's, there's also the assumptions of, of a design build. There's a lot of assumptions in the sense of other aspects that could maybe drive this down. We just went through COVID, we're seeing that experience not only in a lot of sectors, but certainly it's starting to simmer down. And once we get, I feel once we get through that, things will, will settle down even in the material side of, of things. We're, we're hearing that now. And, and again, the, the, you know, where do we ever see the cost of borrowing today? I talked to an economist with C I B C just the other day, and I asked him the question, how long do you think these low interest rates will stay? And he says, the longer they stay, the longer it will be, the harder it will be to move from this level because of everybody now that's the norm. So we talk about in this project of three or four percent possibility of the cost on that. Gosh, I remember I bought my first house, it was twelve percent. And I thought, I know a lot of people around here have heard that as well. So what better time to invest in our seniors and our community is now in the sense, even just on the cost of borrowing. And I know it's something that we have to look at in our budget and certainly in fairness of, of, of all those, you know, decisions that we make. But that's why we're elected to make these decisions. And I'll leave it at that, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Counselor O'Leary, I did see you indicating you have a question. But perhaps I can lead you to the end because I'll, I'll give you the last, the last word. Counselor Desai, you'll be next.
Thank you. The one point that I did miss, Warden Hicks, and I hear you're tirating, if you will, is that we talk about the increased employment opportunities that this brings. If I'm not mistaken, we're having a hard time staffing the current beds that we have. So by adding more beds, are we pushing ourselves into a corner where the quality of care goes down? And that's not something I'm okay with. I, I, I don't think anyone should be okay with the quality of care going down. And if we're not able to appropriately staff the beds currently, what makes us think that we will be able to staff the beds when we have a hundred and twenty-eight of them? So that, I think that should be taken into consideration as well. The problem with the cost of borrowing is that it's still borrowing. And I'm not saying that we should never borrow. I think there's definite times when some debt is, is good debt, if you will. But it is still boring and it is still putting the burden on, on tomorrow's generation or people that will be in our communities tomorrow. I, I don't disagree with Counselor McQueen that the generation previous built arenas, libraries, schools. At the same time, every time I've talked about asset management, I've had opposition on that because it wasn't a thing years ago. Government grants flowed freer than the water in the River Nile a while ago, and those have dried up. And so asset management has become a lot more important. And yet, I don't think it gets the, the level of importance in, in, in the media and in local governance as, as it should. So we need to look at the assets we have today and make sure that those assets can be kept, maintained, and maybe improved for future generations in a sustainable manner. I don't, I disagree that what we're doing right now in terms of accelerating the, the the build at Gray Gables, which again, I'll repeat something. The electorate is saying that we never asked for a new build at Great Gables. It's, it's not sustainable. And so that's why, even though I'm, I'm in favor of keeping Gray Gables a publicly owned entity, I cannot support the cost of building or having a new build at Gray Gables. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Counselor Desai, now Counselor Robinson, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. I am very proud of our Gray County communities of care. Our seniors need long-term care homes that are future-ready and capable of providing quality care. The need for new beds will increase access to long-term care, reduce fee wait lists and ease hospital capacity pressures. I often refer to our Gray County strategic plan, and I will again right now. Gray County is committed to the health and well-being of our residents living in long-term care, our communities of care now and in the future. There is a strategic initiative under goal number two, support healthy, connected communities, priority outcomes, improve the well-being of our residents and also long-term care that meets the present and future needs of the people who live in our community. Long-term care is a strategic priority for Gray County. It is a priority to our communities of care. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And I just wanted, Counselor Hutchinson was asking about what the cost is, you know, per household. So realistically, the cost at four percent per household is going to be in the neighborhood of forty or fifty dollars. And that's, you know, as Mary Lou said, that would be spread over three or four years. So we're talking, you know, twelve, twelve dollars and fifty cents per household per year. So fifty, fifty bucks over four years. I think a majority of people in the county, if they ask for quality, long-term care for their grandparents, for their parents, would be glad to pay that amount of money. I, I recognize, you know, there's a cost. But I think if we don't go ahead with this rebuild, the, you know, the future financial costs and human costs will be much higher. So I, I hope everyone, you know, looks at their conscience today when they're making this decision because it's about our seniors. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor McQueen, you're next, but I'm going to ask you to just keep it brief, okay?
Just a very brief, two points. One, talking about employment, I was listening to CBC Radio this other day and Sarnia Lempton, they're, have a program in their local high school. It's a program that, it's a P S W program or a, a course. And they're finding they're getting great opportunity to, to have students get exposed to that type of work. And they're finding they're getting a pretty good uptake. And it was on CBC, I think, about CBC Morning this past week. I'm going to say maybe Tuesday. It should be available still on Ontario Morning on that website. And I, at a time, I, a certain time, Mr. Warden, I do wish to put a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm going to turn, sorry, I do have a speaker. Do you mind if I deal with Counselor Mill? Before entertaining the motion? I'm asking you, Deputy Warden. You're okay with that? Counselor Mill, would you prefer to speak now or after we deal with the Counselor McQueen's motion?
I'll speak now. I have no idea what the motion would be. But I, I, I think it's unfair to make generalizations about the cost and the level of care. We can't just look at long-term care in isolation. There are so many demands that any municipal government, and this government in particular, are asked to provide. And to suggest that simply adding twenty-eight beds is going to solve the riddle of long-term care demand is, I, I think, stretching it a bit. We are going to have demands for transportation, demands for better roads. It, it, the list goes on and on and on. And sure, in the isolation, each one of them, as Counselor Mackey has pointed out, might be a minimal amount, but it adds up. And there are lots of people in our communities that are living on fixed incomes that maybe can't, can't afford that extra twelve dollars a month. I think we're doing a tremendous job of providing quality, long-term care to residents in our county. Are we doing enough? It's never going to be enough. But I think what we are doing is providing a good level of service. And there's certainly lots of private providers doing the same thing. But at what cost? And I, I, and I think it was Counselor Mackey said that, at, at a previous meeting, he indicated that the electorate of the last election asked for more long-term care. And he said, we need to do it regards to the cost. I'm not, I'm not prepared to go there at any cost. I don't think so. I think we can do better with spreading our resources across the county to allow everyone to participate in a, in a quality community. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. Counselor Mackey, I'm assuming you want to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And to Counselor Mill, I don't believe I have ever said more beds at any cost. I, I do believe that more beds at a cost of twelve dollars per year. I do believe that that is something that we should do. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor McQueen, we'll turn to you next. You have a motion.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, I didn't know, Counselor O'Leary had his hand up earlier. I didn't know if he wished to speak prior to the motion or not.
Fair question. Counselor O'Leary?
No, I'm good. Let's just wait. We'll do the motion first.
Thank you. Counselor McQueen?
Pleasure, Mr. Warden and County Council. And my motion that I'm prepared to put on the floor is we defer the notice of motion that's being presented today to get confirmation in writing from the province and the Ministry of Long-Term Care that the allocation of sixty-two long-term care beds for the expansion of Gray Gables can be held in advance or held to a particular time till the time we wish to use them. And if that can't be confirmed or what is the proper, help me out, Madam Clerk, in the sense of, I'm trying to word it that, to give us that confirmation that the beds can be held for us and what's the time period for that? Sorry, I can't hand you a piece of paper because you don't do that.
Fine. So if I understand, and Kathy is, is drafting a motion now, but if I understand correctly, you're wishing to defer until such time as confirmation from Ministry of Long-Term Care can be received speaking to the, holding the beds in conveyance.
Yes.
And, and for the length of time they can be held in conveyance.
That's right. And it's in writing, have it in writing, please.
Okay, before I turn to Madam C O, I'm going to ask for a secondary. Excuse me, do you have a comment about the process or about the actual motion? C O?
My comment is about the language that's being proposed. I think the, the question that we would be asking the province is for an extension to the completion date for a redevelopment at Gray Gables. That's the, the province has approved a project at Gray Gables with a completion date of 2025. And so we can ask them to extend that completion date. But to, to ask them to hold beds, I think outside of the, of the application that, that we've made right now likely doesn't work.
Deputy Warden?
So I'm just going with regards to the notice of motion, the last line that, that the redevelopment of Gray Gables be placed on hold until such time Gray County Council decides otherwise. The author of the, of the motion may speak to that. But I, I, I just, if we don't get, get some hard information to know we can put these beds off for a period of time and know that period of time, I think it's hard to make this decision because if this motion is, is, as it is, and we don't have that information, we could lose them tomorrow if we don't have confirmation that we can keep those beds for at least to a period of time. And I understand that the 2025 build is, is that case. But I just need, I think we need some assurance that if we take a pause here, those beds are still going to be there when we, as, as it says in the notice of motion, that until such time Gray County decides otherwise. So otherwise could be twenty years from now. So I guess my point is, is we need some information to know how long we can substantially hold those beds. So I, that's the wording.
Hold on, your, your motion is not properly before us yet. I'm trying to get it there so we can have proper debate. I believe that that's what our clerk was about to weigh in on. I, I think we're trying to find the right language. I believe the C O is suggesting that your motion may want to reflect that we're requesting an extension of the project, which does give you, I think, if they're extending the project, then essentially they are holding the beds, are they not? They're extending the project. I think that's a suggestion that she's trying to make. You need to decide whether you like what she's suggesting or whether you want to proceed with something else.
I am not opposed to that. I don't have the language or how was in front of me, how we receive that language in the sense that.
Clerk does. Just hang, hang tight.
Thank you. And, and this is the, the wording, that the notice of motion be deferred until such time as Gray County receives confirmation in writing from the province as, oh, as to how far into the future the extension to the completion date of the redevelopment will be permitted.
Gray Gables.
Yep, redevelopment of Gray Gables will be permitted. Does that?
Madam C A O, is that in line with what you were suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Warden? You're good? So, okay, excellent. We now need a second. Looking for a hand, Councilor Mackey, second. Okay, now we can have debate on the motion, I suppose, to request the extension.
Well, you're just, actually, you're just voting on the motion to defer the notice of motion. Yes.
Exactly, yes. Any debate? Should I call the question? Oh. I see debate. Deputy Warden McQueen?
The reason I, I, I asked for this deferal is, and I, I, I'm not going to speak to the mover of this motion, but and, and possibly he can confirm this, but I understand from the presentation from Councilor O'Leary was he wants to take a pause to do the one project and then come back to the other project. And, and so that's, that's, I just, you know, if we take a pause and we know that those, those beds can be held, you know, for a period of time, I think that maybe adds a bit more information for the decision to be made here. But if we can't confirm that, I think that makes a harder decision here in the sense that, you know, moving forward. So that's the purpose of mine, or my amending, or my, my motion here to defer for that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I believe, I mean, I've not heard anyone or any member of council saying that they don't want the, the extra beds at, at Gray Gables. They just may, maybe don't want them right today or in the very near future, that they want to, you know, postpone this. So I, I do believe it's crucial that we're able to find out from the province how long we are able to postpone them for. And has been mentioned before that, you know, if they give us a date of, you know, twenty-twenty-seven that we have to have the project by, we're still going to have to work towards that date. So I just hope the question really is, you know, we want to move, we want these beds, but we want them at a later date. You know, I, I hope, you know, we don't lose them. Thanks.
Sir, Councilor Bond?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. You know, in, in my mind, I'm, I'm really not believing that at some point in the future, we've got the ability that if we went to the government, that they're going to say, no, we're not going to give you new beds. You know, I think there's going to be beds available. The big question here is, can we afford it? And the argument is, we can't afford it. Councilor Mackey is absolutely right. There's none of us that are saying, we don't want those beds. We all want those extra beds, but can we afford it? Really, what, what the delay is about is, well, we've got federal liberals of all people promising extra money for long-term care in, in election campaign. Will they actually deliver on it? Who knows? If they start to throw money to long-term care, put up your hand quickly and tell me the province isn't going to give us the beds if we've got the project available. It, it, the delay is about funding. It's not about whether we lose beds, whether we don't lose beds. If we do lose beds, if, if this doesn't get held for us at this point, I'm confident there's going to be other beds available at, at some point. But it's the funding that we need to have to be able to proceed with that, and that's what, what the delay is about. Meanwhile, we've got, we've got deadlines for Rockwood Terrace that we need to move forward at this point. And that's, that's kind of a part of the separation is, let's move forward with what we absolutely have to move forward with, making sure that we keep those beds. And if funding becomes available for more beds at Gray Gables or anywhere in Gray County, you know, that, that are ours, being the governments, then, you know, we move forward. The, the delay, I, I think, is how do, how do we fund this? And we can't fund it the, the way, the, the way it looks right now. So that's, I'm, I'm not supporting Paul's motion at this moment because I think we need to delay until we figure out how we're going to fund it. And I'm confident that whenever that is, there's going to be beds available, and no provincial government's going to say, no. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Soever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And, and, and Councilor Body brings up a very good point. It's, it's how we're going to fund it. And, you know, you know, I'm a little distressed that we haven't really looked at how we're going to fund it. I mean, the, all of the private sector is going to a campus of care. The county is simple, is very successful. They have much lower costs per, per bed than we do. Now, admittedly, they are a bigger community, and so there is some economies of scale. But, you know, we, we, every time I bring up what, what is going to happen with that old building, couldn't we convert it into seniors' housing and make some money? You know, I keep hearing from the C A O that, no, we, we haven't looked at that. We haven't gotten any value to it in the current financial model. I don't believe this financial model, quite frankly, but we haven't tried to optimize it. We've just taken the highest cost we could find, put it in there and, and tried to scare council into not moving forward. And, you know, I, I just get very frustrated. And I hear Councilor Body's point, but it's our job to make sure that we come up with innovative solutions to be able to afford this, which includes, we have a huge opportunity there in that we, we have fifty-five acres or so there. We have an existing building which can be converted. It's only twenty years old. It probably has twenty to thirty years of life left. And we assign no value to it and create a financial model that, you know, it scares me too. But I think we can do a lot better than that financial model. And, you know, that's really, you know, our job to make sure that we, we do.
Those are all the hands that I see. I think it's time for us to call the vote. Are we ready to call the vote? So on the motion to defer, is there anyone opposed? So one.
Mr. Warden, I'd like a recorded vote.
And point of order, Mr. Warden? Okay, I would just wanted to make sure that Counselor Soever's hand was down, so there was clarity in the vote. Thank you.
There's going to be a recorded vote, so that will take care of that.
I understand that.
I always tell you to be off mute, and there I was. So motion to defer the notice of motion, if you are supportive of the motion to defer, you are voting in favor. If you are not supportive of the notice of the motion to defer, you are voting opposed. Counselor Mackey?
In favor?
Counselor Gamble?
In favor?
Counselor Burley?
Opposed.
Counselor Carlton?
Opposed.
Counselor McQueen?
In favor?
Counselor Desai?
Opposed.
I'm sorry?
Opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Opposed.
Warden Hicks?
Opposed.
Counselor Columbus?
Opposed.
Counselor Kevany?
In favor?
Counselor Body?
Opposed.
Counselor O'Leary?
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury?
Opposed.
Counselor Millen?
Nay.
Counselor Soever?
In favor?
Counselor Potter?
In favor?
Counselor Robinson?
In favor?
Counselor Hutchinson?
In favor?
The motion to defer is lost forty to fifty.
Okay, we're back on the main motion. Is there any further debate on the main motion, or are we ready? Oh, sorry, Counselor, if there's no other comments, I will turn to Councilor O'Leary, and then we'll have a vote. So speak up now if you have any further comments on the main motion. Seeing none, I will turn to Councilor O'Leary, and then we're proceeding, just declare, we're proceeding to a vote after Councilor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think a lot of the discussion today has been on pure speculation. And I'm glad Counselor Body brought up the liberal government campaigning for their investment into long-term care, because this delay could very well be the smartest decision we ever made. We might, we might end up getting a, a huge grant for Gray Gables. Who knows? But the bottom line is, this, there's a, a figure in front of us that, in my opinion, we can't afford. And, and that's where the decision lies. I think it would be irresponsible to spend that much money all at once. But I did want to, I think Counselor Desai brought up staffing issues. I just wanted to ask Jennifer, can just, if Jennifer could speak on the operations, what the operations are looking like in terms of staffing, both present and future?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor O'Leary, and through you, Mr. Warden. There's no question that we're in a health human resources shortage. We're in a crisis. It's a critical shortage of health, of workers across the entire health system, and long-term care is, is not at all excluded from that. It is a serious and ongoing challenge, and we're, we're very grateful for the resources that we have as municipal operators of long-term care. And even still, we find ourselves facing this challenge on a daily basis. The leadership teams focus on staffing levels every day. Not, it used to be, in the old days, it used to be Thursdays or Fridays, making, you know, planning for the weekend or, or a holiday. And it's now every day, working to make sure that we're at appropriate staffing levels. Just as recently as last weekend, one of the homes had the, needed the executive director and the director of care to work the night shift to cover a P S W shortage. So I, I happen to have stats handy with relation to Gray Gables because we're actively working on implementing the B S T U, the Behavioral Support Transition Unit pilot. And so we're part of the implementation phases, sorting out the enhanced staffing levels and doing that recruitment, giving opportunities for the existing employees if they're interested in working in the specialized unit, and then reaching out for external applicants. So what the lead of this implementation project reached out to me a while ago, talking about some of the concerns. So in terms of numbers, before we implement the B S T U, we, the schedule requires forty-two P S Ws in order to staff a two-week schedule. And we currently have fifty-three P S Ws on the roster and only thirty-six actively working for lots, for all sorts of reasons that are approved and legitimate related to COVID and/or education leaves, other things. So we are already struggling on a daily basis to meet the base staffing requirement. The B S T U requires six additional F T Es in order to meet the enhanced staffing levels that we've committed to to safely operate the B S T U. And we received only three external applications. And the B S T U is really, I, I think it gives a good sense of the lay of the land across the, the, the sector because the Behavioral Support Transition Unit is an exciting opportunity for people to have fully paid-for training as part of their hire. We offer very competitive wages, and even then, we were only able to, we only received three external applicants. We have done work to determine how many additional staff we would need in order to operate the ninety additional beds. And at a minimum, we need a hundred and twenty-five additional workers. At least of them, sixty, sixty of them need to be personal support workers in order to successfully operate the ninety beds. And that's before we build in any buffer for education leave, sick time. So that, that just gives you a sense of what's going on. We are actively working. We have lots of plans, lots of outside-the-box strategies. And unfortunately, none of them are overnight solutions, and they all come with, with a cost. We have had some success, and, and we continue to do that. But the work we're doing today doesn't help us tomorrow. It helps us down the road. And be happy to share some of those innovative ideas at, at another time. But it is an ongoing struggle that does cause me concern.
So there?
Great, thanks for that, Jennifer. So, Mr. Warden, I, I, my final comment is, this is about living within our means. And, and this is just too much money at one time, and we don't have to do Gray Gables, and that, that is my point. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Sir, Deputy Warden, I see your hand again, but I'm just going to caution that we are ready to vote, and I would ask you to just keep your comments brief. I don't want to cycle conversation, but we do have to move on.
No, it's just more or less for, for clarity purposes. Thank you, Mr. Warden. On November twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, this county council supported applying for the sixty-two beds. Certainly, in November of twenty-twenty, we were awarded those beds. And I think one other point of clarity that maybe has mentioned that, you know, just saving Gray Gables, but also everybody on this supported the application of applying and also supported receiving those sixty-two beds. The part of clarity that I do want to just tease out of here is why it's talked about cost here was they suggested, was suggested, it was suggested that we need to do a new building versus an addition. And I know going back and a lot of research I did last night on, on a lot of those meetings, I think maybe the C A O could, could help me out here, but I know what sort of the early stages, and it was determined that a, a new build would be more efficient than doing an addition just because the economy. And I have picked that up from a lot of different facts, but I know that was the other option, was to, to build that wing. But from, from an economy or from an efficiency, and even that probably from a provincial perspective, they suggested that it should have been, it would be best to do it as a new build versus an addition. But the attention always in the back of, going back to January twenty-sixth of two thousand nineteen was to do an addition, which Gray Gables always was developed as having that fourth wing. But I don't know if the C A O has any comments there, but I, I think for a point of clarity, I think where we've got this cost is because it is for a brand-new build. And, but some of that has been outside of our prerogative in the sense of where we are and where we are suggested to, to do that. And maybe part of that clarity was from when the provincial government allocated these sixty-two beds. That was their suggestion that it would be a new build. And I don't know if the C A O has any, any comments to that, but I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, from, from the viewing public, that that's why we were, because that was suggested of a new build versus a wing.
Through you, Mr. Warden, I think the place that we find ourselves in right now is that the province approved a, a new build, and they have been clear that they are not, they would not support an amendment to our application to change it to an addition rather than a new build. It would have to be a, a new submission in order to have that considered. We certainly do have the numbers that, first of all, the numbers that we provided last fall, we can revisit those as well. We have updated those figures as well to more current numbers. And certainly, from an operational perspective, there are efficiencies to the, the new build rather than, than an addition.
Satisfied, Councilor McQueen?
Thank you. I, I think it was important from the viewing public just to understand why we are at where we are. I think it's important. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we are ready to call the vote on the motion before us. I haven't heard anyone call for a recorded vote, so if that's.
I will, Mr. I will, Mr. Warden. I'll ask for a recorded vote, please.
Okay, turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is the notice of motion. If you're in, in support of the notice of motion, you are voting in favor. If you are not sup- If you are not sup, in, uh, support of the notice of motion, you are voting opposed. Counsel Mackey?
Opposed.
Counsel Gamble?
Opposed.
Counsel Burley?
Four.
Counsel Carlton?
Four.
Counsel McQueen?
Opposed.
Counsel Desai?
In favor?
Counsel Patterson?
In favor?
Warden Hicks?
In favor?
Counsel Columbus?
In favor?
Counsel Keveney?
Opposed.
Counsel Body?
In favor?
Counsel O'Leary?
In favor?
Counsel Woodbury?
In favor?
Counsel Millen?
Yay.
Counsel Soever?
Opposed.
Counsel Potter?
Opposed.
Counsel Robinson?
Opposed.
Counsel Hutchinson?
Opposed.
Motion is carried fifty to forty.
Thank you very much. Move on to the agenda, we simply have a motion, uh, to adjourn, to adjourn. Uh, can I get a mover, uh, first to adjourn by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Burley? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried, thank everyone very much. Good meeting, I think for many of us, we have another meeting now scheduled for one-thirty, correct?
Yes.
Yes, excellent. Okay, we'll.